All right. If you all are ready, let's stand. We'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we are privileged to be here today, Lord, on this Christmas week, and we just thank you, Lord, for this time of celebration when we celebrate your birth. We just pray for a wonderful time for each person in this community with their family over this week. We pray that you will protect everyone from sickness, from accidents, from car wrecks, all the things that would turn this wonderful time into a sad time. We pray for our servicemen and women that are serving all over this world, for those that are unable to be with family at this time. We thank you for the freedom that affords us this right. We pray for this county. We pray for this upcoming year, for your blessings upon this county, for everyone, for citizens, for those that work for the county, for taxpayers that support our operations. We thank you for this opportunity to take care of county business and ask your blessing upon this agenda. We are grateful for the safe return of our county attorney, John Mark Coburn, who is with us today, and we just thank you for his commitment. We just turn this agenda over to you now, in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Welcome, everyone, to our December 23 special meeting of Commissioners' Court, our final meeting of the year. It is 9:00 a.m., and we will begin with item number one, public comments. If anyone has comments or requests for information on non-agenda items, this is your opportunity. All right. I see you're here. Are you going to speak on any particular subject? You just wanted us to see that you were back?
No, no, actually, the Rockport left a couple commissioners actually starting attending meetings more often than I had.
Okay. Well, we welcome you. We're glad to see you back. I am especially glad to see you back. All right. We'll move to item number two, considering possibly approved minutes from the December 9 regular meeting of the court. This was two weeks ago.
Make it motion.
Motion for approval of those minutes is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
And then item number three, considering possibly approved minutes from last Monday's, December 16 special meeting Commissioners' Court. This was a single agenda meeting only. We talked about our votes for the members of the appraisal district. That was a special need meeting.
Make it motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, Discuss Justice of the Peace One's Office Supplies Budget With Possible Action To Follow. You'll hear from Steve Aghan, our Justice of the Peace. You'll hear from Barbara as well, I believe. So, Steve, let me invite you up to the podium.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I'm here today to ask for a budget amendment to allow me to have an office supply line. Our office supplies at the moment are in a deficit, and the reason being is that up to 2017, there was a fairly large, I want to say nest egg of funding that is funded by our administrative fees on certain tickets, deferral fees. Part-time employees were being taken out at that time, and then in 2018, a line was created for part-time employees for our appraisal, one, part-time employees. What I'm here to do, again, is to ask that you give me a budget line that is already created, but it's not funded, and I'd like to ask him for a $3,000 budget line for a twofold thing. First off, to be able to better follow what our budget is when it comes to office supplies, and second, to take and clear the DDC fund that the office supplies come out of to a zero balance until it starts building again.
Tell us what a DDC is.
A DDC fund is the monies that we generate from our administrative fees, and that's on all deferrals to tickets, which include driver's education. If somebody completes their driver's education, then they get charged a $10, $10 to $20 deferral fee. Registrations on vehicles, if somebody gets a ticket for invalid registration, they have so long, so many days to get it renewed, they bring it to us, and then we charge them administrative fee of $10 to $20 and defer it out, so they don't have to pay the complete fine. As well as things such as window tint. Somebody has some dark window tint, they get it changed out within so many days, then we don't charge them the full fine, we defer it with an administrative fee of $10 to $20, depending on, you know, what it is. Also, I have the right, as a judge, to defer individuals under special circumstances and charge that administrative fee. But I don't do it to generate income. Over the past several years, the amount of deferrals have gone down. Most people are not wanting to do driver's education or not allowed to do driver's education with speeding tickets. We don't see that many registration tickets anymore, and, you know, it's just, over a period of time, depleted out. Me coming in, the office, and some of the station area, all had to be changed out. Stamps had to be changed out, and that's not cheap. And so that's brought our funding down, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. What we're looking at on this office supplies is, again, is to bring the DDC fund. Any questions on what the DDC fund is?
Does that stand for Defensive Driving Course? Is that where that came from?
That's, really don't know. That's what Net Data had told me to begin with, was on the defensive driving, but actually it's the deferral, anything that would do with deferrals is administrative. That's the only thing we charge administrative fee for. What it was actually named, we really don't know. I haven't been able to find out what the DDC actually stands for, but that's where the deferral funds go to. If you allow this $3,000 and bring that line item, that balance back to zero, it's going to give me an opportunity to build that fund up again over a period of time, and hopefully this office supply line budgeted, that amendment, slowly shrink. And if you have any other questions, you know, that's what I'm asking for, is to better follow what our office supplies is, and we've got to have paper pens, and expenses are going up considerably on it. Just ink for printer cartridges are expensive.
Can you make that correlation between the expense of the office supplies and the income? Or you want Barbara to do that?
If you like.
We need an accountant.
Well, the way that it's worked historically is the admin fees, which is, the line in the budget only has so many characters, so that's why it says DDC fees. It's any deferral, as Judge Aghan referred, you know, told you all about. So those admin fees go into that account, and as they go in there, historically, the county has used those for office expenses, and it's, there's been plenty of money there for years and years and years. Before 17, a part-time position was funded, for about four years before that. The first year was about $90, the second year was about $100, the third year was about $1,000, and then in 17, it was about $2,900. So that $4,000 in part-time salaries that came out of that account is what caused that account to go negative. If that money were still in there and we had not had those part-time costs, we would not be here today asking, you know, for a budget amendment. At this point, that line item has a negative balance of about $1,104. So we've looked at it over the course of the past 60 days or so, and it's continuing because there are legitimate items that they need in order to run their office. So what Judge Aghan is asking you for is a budget amendment of $3,000 that will come out of contingency, the general contingency for the county. And then as those admin fees rebuild, we hope that we will be able to take that out and not have to continue that. But we're not sure until we see how that flows through. There's no longer any part-time salaries coming out of that account. That was in 17 and prior.
You have any idea, at the pace we're running right now, how much revenue that DDC account would generate in a fiscal year?
It may generate around $3,000, about the number that we're looking at. Yes, sir. The first thing we're going to do, if you all approve the $3,000, is we're going to bring that account to zero. So the $3,000 will take $1,104 out of that, and then the remainder will be left for Judge Aghan to run his office, to buy toner and pens, or whatever's needed, general office supplies. But he is being very careful with that, to make sure that, you know, they don't buy things that aren't absolutely needed.
As I understand this, I don't know why the decision was made years ago, I guess by Carl. I don't think it's good accounting, I know you don't think it's good accounting, to have expenses and income flowing through the same account, because then you don't see what either one is generating. You don't see what the total revenue is, you don't see what the total expense is, you just hope it zeros out there. And so what's happened, it's crept up on us. The expenses have outpaced the income right when Steve comes into office, and Steve's not running an office with a part-time person, but we did have that situation at least a year ago and prior to that. And so now we find ourselves, as we continue to do what we've been doing, spending monies out of office supplies, but hitting the revenue account for DDC, whatever that means, I'm going to call it defensive driving, that's what I've always thought it meant. And so we think it's best to separate this and have DDC revenue only flowing into that DDC line, and office supplies expense coming out of an office expense line, which is there, but it's got a zero budget fund. So, yes, we'll hope that those accounts will offset in the future, but for now, we're playing some catch-up.
Yes.
To get that account back to zero and to give you some working money for the next nine months.
Yes, sir. Exactly.
All right. So Barbara, along with that, will go forward and will establish those two accounts, and we won't, we won't intermingle the expenses and the revenues, we'll keep those separate. But for now, what Justice of the Peace Aghan is asking you for is a budget amendment. So this is a request for new money, $3,000, $1,1100 of which will go towards zeroing out that deficit, and that'll leave him about $1,900 for office supplies. And like you said, you had a heavy hit of office supplies when you came into office to change the name on lots of different things.
Yes.
Okay, gentlemen, what would you like to do? Any questions or comments? This is your time.
I'll make a motion. We do it, and then next year, we'll know how it balances out.
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to make a special amendment to pull $3,000 out of our contingency fund and put into a combination of office supplies expense line item and to zero out the DDC fund negative balance.
Yes.
I'll second.
Who was that? And Commissioner Parker seconds that. Any discussion on that, if you're not crystal clear on this? All right. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
All right, Steve, you survived. Thank you, Barbara, for helping him and me figure that out. Item number five, Considering Possibly Approve Updating Our County Policy In Regards To Accruing Sick Leave Hours. Barbara, you want to handle that one?
Our handbook states that our sick leave is accrued monthly, and we put that on employees' checks and in the system at the second payroll of each month. We have 12 employees who are in a different, whose sick leave is not accrued at that time. Some are at anniversary date, some are on January 1 of each year, so there are 12 of those. What I would like to do is I would like to bring everybody into the fold and do it one way countywide. So that's what I'm asking you to do. The problem with it, the way it is, is the way Net Data is set up, we can't, we have to go in and touch every single employee to correct these 12 that need adjustment. So they won't, they won't get any more sick leave, they won't get any less sick leave, it just won't come on, some are on their anniversary date, some are on January 1 of each year. In some departments, two people are one way, one person's in another. We're trying to just get it cleaned up, so that everybody is monthly on the second paycheck.
Here again, do you have any idea how that situation developed?
I asked that question, and I was told that different elected officials in the past had been able to do whatever worked for them. But that doesn't work when you're trying to do payroll for 140 people, it's a lot of extra work. And then when someone asks how the sick leave works, it works differently for one than another, which is not what we want today.
Okay. So you'll be able to find, these 12 that may have obviously different anniversary dates, you're going to be able to figure out where they are and have a starting point as of, what, January 1, or what's your target date?
Yes, sir. January 1.
And then will there be any need for them to continue to put an accrual for sick leave on their payroll form?
It still needs to go on their form, so that they can keep up with it and know how much that they have. If they don't, they call us all the time. What's mine, what's mine? We do need them to keep that on there, but we'll have to get with these 12 people and bring theirs up to date, make sure that, you know, all corrected.
Are they going to have any argument over this, or is it not going to be easy to understand?
I don't see that it makes any difference one way or another, it's just, it's just getting everybody done the same.
All right. Bottom line, this makes the job easier in the payroll department.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any question on this?
Make a motion, we approve this.
Motion to approve this change in policies made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number six, Considering Possibly Approve Enrolling The County In The State-Mandated Cybersecurity Training Course To Fulfill Texas Government Code 205.5191. Let me read you this statement here from Texas Association of Counties. I first learned about this at my most recent training course. Some of you may have been taking the six modules that Texas Association of Counties made available to us back earlier in this calendar year, but now, the state, in its infinite wisdom, has said, "We will now require you to take a cybersecurity training course, and it must be one that meets our specifications." So fortunately, Texas Association of Counties can interpret what those attributes are that this particular course must contain, and Texas Association of Counties is telling us, "We will provide for you a cybersecurity training course that meets the government mandate." And obviously, your employees must take this, but let me read to you what Texas Association of Counties, and then I may read part of the law here. This is put out by Texas Association of Counties, and this is the form that I'm hoping we'll sign with a motion today. "Under a new state law, Texas Government Code 2054.5191, effective June 14, 2019, all local government employees and elected officials who have access to a local computer system or database must complete a cybersecurity training program certified by the Texas Department of Information Resources." Commissioner Riddle, if you'll recall, that was that entity that said, you know, we had that discussion back on voting, we talked about the DIR, the Department of Information Resources, it's this same entity. But they must complete this training course at least annually, so this isn't going to be a one-time deal, this is going to be something we'll have to keep up on, on an annual basis. "In response to the new cybersecurity training mandate and in furtherance of our continued commitment to our county family, TAC is offering a free cybersecurity course that has been certified by DIR and fulfills the requirements of the new law. Should your county choose to participate in TAC's cybersecurity training program, please have your Commissioners' Court approve your county's participation and complete the enclosed form and return it via email to us. For more information about the underlying legislation and TAC's cybersecurity training course, please visit county.org/cybersecurity. The course will be made available to enrolled counties on January 15 of 2020 and should be completed by June 14, 2020. Enrollment is available on a rolling basis throughout the year." So what we want to do, my suggestion to you, is that you vote to sign the county up for this free course. So it's free, it's beneficial, and it's a requirement, three good reasons to do this. The bad part is, we're going to need to take this cybersecurity training course. Now, that's bad, because it's time out of our day, but it's good, because I'm sure this will be a quality course, and in this day and age, we all need to be better prepared for cybersecurity threats, so that we don't mess up our own county database. And we trust the guys at K-Bro to help us, but there are certain things that we, as individuals, have got to be aware of, and this course will help us to do that. You know, I know your questions are, will my employees need to take this? If they have access to a computer that has access to the county's database, yes. If they don't have access, then I think the answer is no, they would not have to take this course. But I'd say just about everybody else in the county is going to qualify for needing to complete this. Any questions here?
Will this be a, they come up and train, do a one-day training, or will this be online?
This will be, this will be online. So again, the very same people that say, "I don't have a computer, and I can't do things on the computer," probably don't have access to the county's database. But if they do, or if you're in doubt, talk to me about it, and we'll figure it out. But we're going to interpret this fairly conservatively and require that anybody touching one of our county computers should take this course. I don't know how long it lasts, and again, it'll be an annual deal, where they will give us refresher information, because cybersecurity threats are always, always evolving.
I've taken that part of some of these tests online lately, and they're very thorough and very easy and to understand, and I think that, I think they come in parts. This one came in, what, four, five, or six parts?
Actually, it came in six parts. And yes, it is good, and despite the fact you've done those, that's not going to count towards this, this is a whole new program. TAC previously had put that out just on their own, trying to encourage education, but now the state has stepped in and says, "We want you to take our course, regardless of what other courses you may have taken from whatever source." I don't know how long it'll be, hopefully it will be a reasonable amount of time and not a whole-day deal, but it will be online, yes, they're not coming here to train us.
These other, about 15, 20 minutes is all it took to do them, so.
I can't guarantee that's how this one will be. So what do you say?
Make a motion, we do that through taxes for free, and then we can sign up who we need to.
All right. Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to enroll in the cybersecurity course sponsored by TAC.
Second.
Second, the motion.
I got a second down here by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. I'll keep you posted on that. Remember, it'll be January 15, this will be available, I'll get us signed up today. Item number seven, Report From Commissioners Regarding Roadwork Status. Commissioner Parker, on your end.
We've been patching and putting up some road signs, and some of the guys are taking their vacations, so that's kind of where we're at right now, mostly just patching. Getting, had to go get a few trees at a 40, 30, I guess it was, and another couple of roads, 3155, I think it was, we had to go cut some trees down that were dead and falling out in the road, just limbs falling here, there, and yonder, so other than that, everything's running pretty smooth.
What's your ice prediction this year?
My ice prediction?
You know, are we going to have a ice storm?
Don't start me lying. I hope not.
Will somebody check the almanac? I really don't know.
It says, and the long-range forecast is saying that we're supposed to be below normal on precipitation and above normal on temperature, the long rains through February.
Let's hope so, for our roads' sake and trees' sake.
It starts raining.
Commissioner Applewhite?
Well, we've been doing a lot of patching on the roads, because we've got to, trying to catch up, and we've been putting about four culverts in the last two weeks and trying to stay ahead of the game. Patching one hole, 10 others come up.
Yeah. Commissioner Fitch?
We've been cleaning some road ditches on 2850 and on 1150 and on 1220. We've been doing side cutting on 1165, on County Road 1220, and on 1070, and we're working on motor grating and fixing some soft spots on 1240 and on 1070. And we also, we resurfaced about 50 yards on, I believe that road is 1240, where it was really rough. Slicked it up really nice, where it was really a rough spot in the road, so staying busy on them ditches mainly, and that's all I have.
All right.
We're doing, of course, potholes, mostly, cleaning ditches and tree limbs and ditches and just trash off the road.
We have, we've been, we've had a lot of issues about dead animals on our roads. People keep throwing out, we've had two times that somebody threw out chickens, another threw out a skinned calf, and I just wish they would, people would kind of, if anybody sees any of that stuff, give us a call, because we would sure like to get these people who's doing this, because it's not very, pretty side on the side of the road.
Thank you. Item number eight, Approve Oral And Written Reports.
Thank you, ma'am.
Judge Lee has a cover page that I'm going to ask you, Commissioners, to sign and approve it every month, but I, every meeting, and I'm just asking that you sign off the way you do on the treasurer's report. What you have in front of you is the combined cash statement, the one that you see every month, and Ms. Pretty and I have confirmed that our numbers do agree, we've not had a timing issue. There's some additional reports there, it's October, November, and December year-to-date budget. I believe it's one of the requirements that we should be presenting to the court each meeting, so you'll be seeing those in the future as well.
That's a different format, but it's easy to follow.
I also want to give you an update. The outside audit is complete, the one that Arnold Walter Arnold does for us. They were very complimentary of the auditor's office and of the offices around the county. They have a few minor recommendations, and they'll have an official report for us in
This year-to-date, are you going to update that literally once a month or just once a quarter?
Well, once a month.
And then the month-to-date, you'll give us that at two, two times during the month as well, not just at the end of the month?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The report that I'll give you at the next meeting will, will have all of the accounts with detail, the budget detail, because you're required to see that as budget officers. So they'll look a little different from the second meeting of the month, the first meeting of the month and the second meeting of the month. But once we get on schedule, they'll be the same all the time.
And this is generated also by your NetData software?
Yes, sir.
Where's that contingency that, like on this budget amendment we're making, where'd it come from? The general, county, or?
Yes, sir.
Is there a line for that contingency?
Yes, sir. Well, you won't see it in that report because that's a consolidated report. The report that I give you in the future, I'll show it to you. Are you in charge by my office and see it today, Mr. Riff?
Make a motion. We approve.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I'm going to pass this form to you, so you'll now have two forms to sign, just like the treasurer's report. All right. Item number nine is our treasurer's report. Cheryl, please.
Make motion, approve treasurer's report.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And there's your treasurer's report. This is your auditor's report, the one that Barbara presented. Okay. Item number 10, approve budget amendments.
Yes, three budget amendments, Scotty. The first one is budget amendment number five. It's for the purchase of the vehicle that the court ordered for Precinct One. It's costing $1,800,000, and that's funded from a loan to Precinct One. That was approved in court on December the 9th. It's just a formality of having y'all sign off on that. The other one is number nine, but before we get to number nine, I want to tell you about number six. Number six, we've already done. It's for the refinancing of the bonds. Number seven was for the juvenile and the county attorney vehicles that we are going to switch and sell. And then number eight was for moving the gravel around for Precinct Four, so that brings us to number nine. So today you have number five, number nine, and number 10. Number nine is for $362. It's the electrical supplies for the cost of installation on the lift that was approved for the maintenance farm. And number 10 is $402. It's for striping for the new vehicles in the sheriff's department. And striping is not histrion, which is what I initially thought. It's for actual words, like the word sheriff, call 911, the county badge is included in that, and the unit number. These are really not required to come to court, but because they're capital outlay, I felt like in the spirit of transparency, we needed to bring those two smaller ones just so that y'all would be aware of the total cost of those vehicles and that lift.
On the lift, that's not based on actual yet, or is it based on actual? I doubt if we have that. That was just based on what we approved?
Yes, sir.
The estimated cost of that installation, which I hope will be adequate?
I hope it is. I believe you did have quotes on that, so I feel like it will be.
Okay. All right. Any questions on these three? One, purchase of Precinct One truck, and the other two minor reallocations for installation of the truck lift and then for striping of vehicles.
Make a motion, approve.
Motion to approve these three is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. All right. Item number 11, signed pay orders, approve payment of bills.
Make a motion, pay our bills.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Item number 12, closing comments, if any. We, I did just submit our semi-annual request for TechDOT's reimbursement on our loop bonds. That is based on results gathered from traffic counting that's done at specific points along the loop. In the event that those traffic counts succeed what was predicted years ago, then they would pay us a larger amount, which case would pay us off quicker, but we still continue to be just slightly behind what the original projections were. Despite how busy our loop is, they always expected it to be busy, and so once again, we will receive the minimum semi-annual payment, about $4.2 million. We should get that probably early February. I attended the funeral for Sally Ratliff on Friday, the wife of Senator, actually Governor, Lieutenant Governor Bill Ratliff. That was held at St. Mark's Episcopal, if y'all were not aware of that. Bill's wife passed away last week. Once again, John Mark, welcome back. We appreciate it. You, you were gone for quite a while, and you haven't shared any stories with me yet. I know you just got back in town, but maybe at some point you can tell the commissioners, you know, what all, what all you did. All right. Commissioner Riddle?
No, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Fitch?
I'm good. Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Applewhite?
Also, Merry Christmas, everybody. Hope you have a safe and wonderful holidays.
Commissioner Parker?
Same thing. Merry Christmas, everybody.
All right. Thank you all, everyone. Forward to your couple of days off here. And then starting next year, we'll be on a, we'll have some Christmases on weekends for a few years instead of in the middle of the week. Need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everyone.